I'll call this meeting to order on Monday, June the 17th, 2013. My granddaughter's 10th birthday. She hit double digits today, 10. So Abby, I hope you're watching. Not, I hope you're at Chuck E. Cheese or somewhere real. We've got Jim Payne from the Crosspoint Church at 3732 King Springs Road. He's going to come forward at this time and give us our invocation. Also lead us in the place of flag, so everyone please rise.
Let us pray. Lord God, we come to you tonight seeking your counsel, seeking your wisdom to lead in this city with goodness and with justice because you are the king over all of the earth and you rule with goodness and justice. Lord, we ask for all of these public servants, Lord, that you would give wisdom, that you would give discernment in the proceedings to be taken place tonight, that things would be done for the good of the people of this great city. Lord, we pray that your kingdom would come and that your will would be done in Smyrna as it is in heaven. Lord, we think of the schools here and we ask that you would bring safety there, that you would bring peace between teacher and student, between student and student, between staff administration. Lord, we think of the businesses here and ask that you would cause them to flourish. There would be upright business practices, that people would be treated justly and fairly. Lord, we think of the many races and cultures in our city and ask that you would bring reconciliation and peace across racial and class and cultural lines. Lord, we think of the fatherless, the widow, the poor, the immigrant among us, and we ask that you would bring your goodness and your justice into their lives. Lord, we ask for the families, the neighborhoods full of families in our cities, that there would be kindness and compassion and love. Lord, we ask above all things that this great city of Smyrna, which belongs to you, that you would cause it to flourish and that through the decisions made even this evening, that there might be brought about great good for every citizen of this great city. And we ask it in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. The Crosspoint Church is located 27, I'm sorry, 3732 King Springs Road, and I know they'd love to have you if you need to town or if you want to change or whatever, they're good folks. Agenda changes, we've got a couple of agenda changes that's going to require a vote for us to suspend the rules to add these to the consent agenda. They are approval of resolution R 2013-05 and R 20-13-06. And I'll entertain a motion that we suspend the rules to add an item to the agenda.
So move.
Have a motion in a second. Are we working tonight? Is this working? Okay. All right, we've got a motion by Mr. Fennel, seconded by Ms. Pritchett, who we're glad to see is back. You look marvelous. All those in favor of the motion, please vote. Okay, I'm going to just get a show of hands, all those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. That's approved 6-0. That is a motion to suspend the rules to add an item to the agenda. And the item to the agenda, who would like to make that motion? Okay, get ready to, okay.
I'd like to make a motion that we add two items to the consent agenda, item number 2013-05 and 2013-06.
I'm sorry, and it's got Taylor's name right by there. I'm sorry. Those are both resolutions extending the emergency 911 charge, and the second one is renewing the SunTrust Corporation Resolution Certificate of Incuments. So these are things that we do at the end of every year, but it's just not added to the agenda. So you got that, you made that informal motion?
Make it informal motion, yes.
Okay, motion and second. I don't know if this is going to, okay. All those in favor of the motion, please vote. Let's see if it's, let's see if it'll work. Okay. All right, I'll raise your right hand. Okay, that's approved 6-0 to add those items. So those are going to be actually in the consent agenda when they come up. And for the record, Ms. Bluestein is out tonight. She's not feeling well, so, all right. We got mayor's report. I've already made the big announcement. It's my granddaughter's birthday, so. Item four is land issues, zoning and annexation. Item Z 13-010, public hearing, zoning request, Z 13-010, zoning amendment to modify the currently approved site plan, land lots 332, 333, 388, 389, and 390, 34.6 acre tract, south to eastern corner of the east-west connector and Fontaine Road, Ashton Atlanta LLC. Mr. Taylor, will you give us the background on that, please?
Mr. Mayor, Ashton Atlanta Residential LLC, seeking approval for a zoning amendment at the intersection of east-west connector and Fontaine Road. Now, the subject property was annexed and rezoned from R 15 to R 12 conditional on April 17th, 2006 by the mayor and council by a vote of 6 to 0. Specifically at this location, the applicant is proposing an option to use an alternate site plan for the development of the subdivision. The use of the property will remain unchanged. The alternative site plan will result in a reduction from 81 lots to 60 lots with the reconfiguration of the road network through the subdivision. With this alternative plan, reduction in lots results in a decrease in density from 2.32 acres, units per acre, to 1.74 units per acre, as well as an increase in the minimum lot size from 4,000 square feet to 5,000 square feet. Staff does recommend approval.
Is the applicant here? Okay. This is a public hearing. Is anyone here that's in opposition to or would like to make any public comment concerning this zoning amendment to modify this currently approved site plan? Okay, that's the record show there is none. Scott, do you want to, well, this is in Ron Fennel's ward, and I'm sure he's going to ask folks at Community Development to do their thing.
Absolutely.
I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ken Sudrith, if you from Community Development could talk about the application and the stipulations that carry over from the original application to current and the changes.
Most of the information has already been presented to you. This really is a fairly simple request, and it is a modification to a previously approved plan. The modification of the roadway actually has triggered it to come back in front of you. If we were just dealing with lot reductions, I could have handled that administratively. But as stated before, previously it was zoned R 12. The zoning is still R 12 conditional. Zoning map just shows you where the property is. The zoning stays the same, it just has a different site plan on it. As Mr. Taylor said, it is the use of an alternative site plan and a reconfiguration of the road network. This was the currently approved site plan. There were lots also that faced, I'm sorry, I've gone blank here. It was a reduction of the number of lots. Some of the lots face Fontaine Road, but internally they have modified the road network as well as eliminated those lots on Fontaine. This is the new layout, which has been reviewed by staff and the committee that we have together, which includes the fire department, public works, city engineer, and community development They have several different floor plans and layouts. This is under the Glenwood Plan. You can see that, it's my understanding that these units will have the same internal floor plan, they would just look different on the outside. That's the Glenwood Plan, then you have the Melrose Plan, the Monroe Plan, and then the Whitmore Plan. Again, what happened, the subdivision, although it was approved in '06, it was never developed. Staff is recommending approval of the zoning amendment for the use of alternative site plans with the following conditions carried over. We have the standard conditions that we normally have. There is one change to condition number four, just so that everybody is aware of it. The city engineer, in working with their engineer, has come up with a little bit different wording than the original approval. And so I'll read that one into the record, that the storm water management pond should be placed and screened appropriately to be unattractive to the homes inside and outside the development. Water quality is to be addressed in accordance with the Georgia Storm Water Management Manual. The storm water management plan slash report shall comply with the city of Smyrna ordinance and is to be reviewed and approved by the city engineer. It's my understanding that all parties are, agree to that wording. We still have the same standard conditions down with utilities, traffic improvements, decelerating potential, subdivision entrance, streets, debris, and decorative streetlights as we always do. But there are special conditions, and we are rolling all of those over, which have to do with the minimum floor area, landscape plan, a guardrail issue, and including setbacks. Since there has been discussion about setbacks, let me point those out to you, that it is front 22 feet from the back of curved side is three, three feet with a minimum 15 feet between houses, meaning that a house could go within three feet of a property line, but the house adjacent to it would then have to be at least 12 feet so that you would have 15 feet between the houses. 20 and back on 20, the traffic study, the gate entrances, the tree issues, all are rollovers from the original approval. What has been added has been item number 23, where in essence, we are now tying it to the new plan with the following statement of approval. The zoning amendment is subject to the general site plan submitted to mayor and council during the April 17th, 2006 public hearing and subject to the modified general plan submitted May 10th, 2013 as the alternate. Staff shall have the flexibility to approve relatively minor changes in the plan during the actual plan review process without requiring additional approval by mayor and council. The last condition is mitigation of the encroachment into the 50-foot undisturbed stream buffer and the 25-foot impervious surface area setback must be provided at a rate of 1 to 1 elsewhere on the side along the same stream. A separate mitigation site plan must be submitted for approval prior to the issuance of a land disturbance permit. The staff is recommending approval of an alternate site plan that does reduce the number of lots from 81 to 60, hence a reduction in the density. It does eliminate furnished lots along Fontaine. And then we roll over the conditions we had previously with adjusting number four and then adding 23 and 24. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Sudrith, it's your understanding that the applicant has agreed to all of the conditions stated in, including the alteration of number four of mutual agreement? And I'm going to ask them that shortly.
That is my understanding, yes.
Okay. Anybody have other questions on Mr. Sudrith before we get the applicant? Thank you, sir. Representing the applicant, if you could move forward and identify yourself and let's...
Scott, do we have to have that applicant sworn in? Anyone else that's going to give testimony in this, on this issue, it needs to be sworn
Please identify yourself and give the public.
Sure. My name is Mike Buscher. I work with Ashen Woods Homes. I'm their vice president of land acquisition and development and be happy to answer questions tonight regarding this application. And with me is Mark Shaw and Kent Levinson, who own the property. And collectively, I think we can cover what we need to. I think Ken set it up well, and I don't really have too much to add. The only thing that we wanted to see if we could get clarification on, it does reference in the conditions about residents that lots that abut roadways shall not be permitted to utilize hardy plank for any elevation. And our preference would be that we could reference and tie them back to our specific elevations to be approved. The truth of the matter is, I don't know if that will affect us negatively to say certain elevations could no longer be marketed just by virtue of not complying with that particular sentence. So it's not a must-have, it's a would like to have and want to discuss with you, and if we can't get through it, we can't get through it. Other than that, though, I'm just here to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Are you comfortable with the 24 stipulations that are part of the concluded agreement?
We are.
Okay. Good. Mr. Sudrith, would you like to just address that hardy plank consideration for just a brief moment, just so we can all be clear on what he's asking? Do you want to repeat the request?
I will. And it really ties back to one sentence on, I believe it's condition one, where it says that, yeah, the residents whose lots abut external roadways shall not be permitted to utilize hardy plank for any elevation facing these roads. And it's a sort of a tough one to nail down exactly what the intent was, so there could be, maybe Ken can help us with that. But what we would love to do is tie it to that so long as our elevations that we've submitted are approved and they're to everyone's liking, we can move forward with those.
And I think I can say this, is that this was, this zoning was prior to your coming to work for the city, so.
Right. Yes, this was done in, I believe, '06, and I came in '07. My guess would be...
Since you were on council.
They originally had lots that actually faced Fontaine. And so that condition was written to probably address those lots. Those lots have been removed. The question that staff, the reason that's left in there is that you're going to have lots that actually back up to Fontaine. So the question becomes, would council actually want the back of those houses, since you can see them from Fontaine, not to have hardy plank on them with that? So that, that's why that was left in there. But I'm sure the major reason it was put in there had to do with the fact that they were fronting to begin with.
So if they're not fronting, then that, if you're looking at the back end of somebody, looking at the front end of somebody's, I can maybe see what you're going to do, somebody's back of somebody's house, is that what you're saying?
Let me, back here, if I can back this up, Mr. Mayor, for you. If you look on the alternate site plan, you've got that one cul-de-sac that comes back. The question is, how are they going to situate those houses on those lots? Are they actually, is that going to be the side of the house or the back of the house that you can see from Fontaine? Then you would have sort of the similar issue up on the other cul-de-sacs that deal with east-west on those lots as well. I think Mike's question is valid, just asking for interpretation. Do you want to enforce that requirement on the side or rear of the houses or just the front of the houses? And if you just want to do the front, the easiest, to me, the easiest thing to do is we would just add a word on the, we would say, the residents who, who front or whose houses were faced, and that would, that would give us direction on that.
Would that, does that work?
Mayor, I think that's fine. That would be fine for us. Obviously, and the big thing is, I hope you know, we're excited to be building again here. I think our product has always been good and it continues to get better. We're going to build a quality home for you. We're going to do it right. We're certainly going to be here for the long haul, and in no way are we going to try to cheapen anything out there. But there does, we get stuck sometimes with these interpretations. What we'd love to do is go build what we think is right.
My question, just looking at this fronting on Fontaine, you really only have three houses in the clubhouse that will be impacted in that regard. Now, the buffer on the east-west connector for those rear of those homes on that upper cul-de-sac of that upper street, what is contemplated in the, in the buffer?
It'll be, type of material, you mean?
Well, how much buffer is contemplated buffering the neighborhood from the east-west connector? Because visually, you probably won't see the houses if the buffer is...
Yeah, because it works both ways. We're going to want, obviously, help our residents from seeing it. And I think the shroud of the cryptos and leonards and other material, I think it'll be somewhere in the neighborhood of a, you know, kind of 10 to 15 foot buffer throughout that whole area. So pretty significant. And just given the topography, I'm hoping that you really wouldn't, you would see a rooftop more than the actual elevation.
And plus, to go on 85 miles an hour down the east-west connector is tough to say.
At a minimum, at a minimum, it's 85.
Okay.
Yeah.
Mike, I remember that stipulation, and back in the mid-2000s, before the economy went, went south in '08, previous councils had started putting in that stipulation because we were concerned about the exterior appearance of new neighborhoods being built with a lot of homes that had three-sided architecture or one-sided architecture, but the, not the pretty front side, but the other sides being the most visible on the major streets. And that condition was put in in a number of subdivisions, not only in my ward, but elsewhere around the city, that, you know, when you drove past a new neighborhood, you saw four-sided architecture for the homes visible from those exterior streets, not, I don't think it was meant to be interior streets. In fact, the stipulation abut external roadways. That was something done based on our experience and citizen requests to just improve the appearance of the neighborhood. You know, I kind of hate going away from that, on the one hand. On the other hand, I know 2013 is a different world from 2005 or 2007. I guess my best and most honest question is, is that something you could live with?
Well, I think it, again, it's hard for me to interpret it. If it really means four-side brick, if that's really what that's really pushing us towards, then the problem with that, with a lot of our elevations, I could bring them back up, but you can see even in the photos, we try to use a good mix of materials, and we always carry that over to the sides of home. But just say, for example, that 50% of that front elevation is a combination of brick and stone, and then you're wrapping that along the back. If you then jump up and try to make it uniform, all brick, it can look odd. It just looks strange. Maybe a water table carrying across the back, something that's appropriate, but just a brick or stone, it's, it never seems to look right. It seems like it was built to be, to meet a zoning condition. So that's our, that's been our pushback on it, is we're not really getting much feedback positively from the purchasers, and we're not really seeing an end product that looks best.
You know, I would think this, I would think that it's, if it's something that's going to help you draw customers in or downgrade your property, it's probably something you're not going to do. I just think of it, looking at it, this property's been zoned for seven years. Is that correct? Seven years it's been sitting there. They're coming in with 21 less lots than what they had to begin with. To me, that ought to be enough economic incentive for the city to, and there again, and I said it upstairs, opinion and taste and things are sort of all subjective to what we all think. I think Ashen Woods' track record is that they build a good quality product, they've been in our community, what they've done has been great. And if we give them a little bit of flexibility with Ken and them, I think we're okay. I mean, I certainly don't want to sit out there and tell you what's going to settle and what's not going to settle, because I don't know. No, I certainly don't want to go in there as the mayor and go over every single house and say, well, I want you to change the wood framing of this, or I want a front porch on that, and you know, I don't think that's what we're here for. But, and we're just talking about a few lots, so.
It kind of, it works back to about eight lots that I think are of concern. And what I'd tell you is that, first of all, I appreciate that sentiment, because we're not trying to cheapen this, and I know you've heard that before. We supplied staff with a front, side, and rear elevation of every single home. We didn't give you that in your PowerPoint package tonight, because it would've just gotten, but we have those to sort of address what we hope was the concern. So I don't know how we do it to move us off the vote tonight, but if we can work with staff, if there's a concern about a specific elevation, and they were to say, hey, you know, in retrospect, Randy or Rustian can say, hey, we don't, we just don't like these five or six elevations for these lots, I think we can work with that, definitely, to limit us back. But I don't know how that helps us to write that into the record.
Yeah, I mean, again, I'm thinking back to what we did. I mean, that became a standard condition because the council at the time said regardless of where the neighborhood is or who the developer is or the builder, we think that's a requirement that ought to be consistent. So, you know, if we change that, I mean, that sort of sets a precedent that we're going to vary, not a special condition, but a standard condition, and you do one, you do them all, and does the condition even apply anymore? You know, as a council, we really haven't had any debate on that subject. Speaking as a homeowner, I've got a three-sided brick house. I wish the four-side was brick, just from a maintenance standpoint. I've got to paint that siding every five years, and, you know, it just doesn't hold up the same as a brick, which holds up great.
If there's any brick layers out there, contact Mr. Lenka. He's got a job for you.
I mean, do you even have any?
We absolutely have that as an option. Someone can buy it. We can, it's, as I said, most of the time, what we, the reason why I'm probably harping on it more than I should is that the, there is an amount of hardy that would go, I think, appropriately around the band of a back of a home, but to say, it can't be seen, then you start saying, well, gosh, it's almost, you know, what do you have to do to remanufacture the home to get it right and not have an inch of hardy, when I think if we put an elevation down, somebody'd say, well, that, that gets it, but it's not in the black and white of the...
How many houses are we talking about?
I think about eight.
Eight houses. We have, and it says it's not going to downgrade the overall development of the product. I just think we ought to just move on. You know, this, I'm excited about the property being developed.
Yeah, and I'm sorry to, this is something I wish I had gotten all the way through with staff, but we're, they've been great, we've been trying to get everything else done, but I, this was just something I wanted to talk to you about, because I think if we tried to change it and there wasn't a discussion, it would have gotten...
And I think this, I think Ken said that he's okay with, with the change, right? Now, don't be tap dancing on me when you come up here, Ken.
I have rubber sole shoes.
Where they're probably worn out from.
No, if you want to modify the language, I mean, Wade's right, it is in the standard provision, but, you know, other times we have, we have come back and said, you know, no more than maybe 50% can be hardy plank. I mean, there's multiple ways to address this. Today's building standards are different than they were previously, so it's not an unusual request. I don't have any particular problem. I do agree that, how do we accomplish that aspect? If you want to avoid the standard precedent-setting concern, I would suggest we just eliminate one and then tie them to the specific...
You know, and I'm not a lawyer, but I'm saying, in my opinion, because we allow a change, I think we, we look at every single subdivision based on whatever it is. I don't think just because you, in my opinion, I don't know, Mr. Cochran, he's the attorney up here, but sometimes we have eight or nine attorneys up here, but I don't think if we make this change, that we've changed it to where we've set a precedence and nobody else can have to do anything. I think we still control all that. We are the government, remember? I think we still control all that. We are the government, remember? Yeah. Well, I don't know. What are you going to say?
I don't have my tap shoes on. There are a lot of ways to accomplish what it looks like would be something that both sides could live with. The way both suggestions Ken had would work. The second one is probably the easiest, just to say, and it sounds like it might address your concern too, that you say no more than 50% of the, of the side of the house could be the hardy plank on the side facing the exterior streets. That would give you the ability to kind of mix and match some, you know, much of that's... I mean, does that solve the concerns?
Well, I mean, it's...
Just, you just kind of tweak number one.
Ken, you made this suggestion, so that meets with your...
Yeah, we're, we're fine with, with 50%. That gives me something to work with when, when we get plans.
Ken, the last subdivision that Ashton Wood did in town, if I remember correctly, was on King Springs Road. Is that correct?
Well, we actually finished out Woodbridge.
Yeah, it's Wood...
Right next door.
Oh, really?
Yeah, we didn't start that, but we did finish it out.
Yeah, but...
Thank you.
I thought y'all did do them, not on Woodbridge, but you did the one on King Springs, too.
Oh, you're right.
And we threw a lot of stipulations on that. Front doors had to look like the back doors, back doors had to look like the front doors. And as far as I know, it, it worked out pretty well. I mean, I never heard any complaints about it. I'm glad y'all are here and I'm glad that we can work out some kind of compromise that everybody's okay with.
Yeah, I mean, I could live with the 50% on the rear elevation or side elevation, whatever's facing the exterior roads. But I really don't want to go away from that as a council standard condition. And, and I would just simply say that as you drive down the east-west connector, you can see some neighborhoods, some in Smyrna, some not, where the side facing the east-west connector is not the prettiest side. And in hindsight, the ones we did, I wished we had done differently. I wish we had had that stipulation because I think it would have made the neighborhood look better and possibly add value to the homes and resale value.
But I do think, Ken, before, I do think that, that we, it may be a stipulation, but there's other things that are included in those stipulations besides brick and...
Yeah, let me just, it reads, condition number one, "The composition of the homes in a residential subdivision shall include a mixture of elements, including but not limited to: brick, stone, shake, hardy plank, and stucco. No elevation shall be comprised of 100% hardy plank siding. The residences who, whose lots are but external roadway shall not be permitted to utilize hardy plank for any elevation facing these roads." What we're suggesting is we would change it so that no elevation shall be comprised of 50% hardy plank siding.
Or no more than 50% hardy plank.
Yeah, and, and then we'd have to modify the last sentence where it talks about, you know, the residents. "Whose lots are but external..." shall not be permitted to utilize, then we'd have to say 50%.
Yeah, the no more than 50% hardy plank.
Would that work for you? I think that works great. And I'll tell you the, the, for other builders out there, I think that gives them, I think what you're going to get is a better finished product. We'll have that from, probably from a layman's view, you'd say that, that has a brick back. But maybe not every single inch of it's covered because you're going to have some overhang, some mountain that'd still be hardy. So that, I think that works well.
I, I think that's acceptable. I think that's a great value for the homeowners that buy them.
Okay.
Okay.
Mr. Shaw, please.
Thanks. I just had one thing. I'm, my name is Mark Shaw. As Mike said, I'm with Southeast Fontaine. We originally zoned this property in 2006. We're the current owners. And just, so I, we have some clarity on the alternate site plan. In the conditions, it, it states it's, the site plan is an alternate. And we had discussed previously that this would be alternate B, that we could do either A, the original plan, or this newly approved plan, only because our contract to sell the property to Ashton Woods is subject to this approval. And we just would like to have the option of doing either the first, developing the first site plan, or this alternate site plan B.
So that's the 81 home plan versus the 60-home plan?
That's right.
So the earlier one is approved?
That's right.
So what we're doing today is contemplating approval of, as you call it, alternative B?
That's correct.
Okay. Ken, what mode does that put us in relative to approval? Is it a supplanting of or is it an either-or? Okay, yes.
Not often, but we have, we, we have sort of an either-or kind of issue. Obviously, the, the first part's already been approved.
Right.
And normally, people are making changes where it really, they don't have the flexibility to do either or. But there have been a few cases. I'm not, I'm okay with it going either way.
And generally, the density is going in the other direction than this one, correct?
Obviously, I, I, I think they want, they'll probably end up with the 60-lot one, but I understand Mark's concern.
Okay.
Until they actually close the deal and get stuff going, you know.
So for all intents and purposes, Mr. Shaw, your plan is already approved and you can build as approved in 2006?
That's correct.
Under the 81?
That's correct. We just, and I know Mike has great intentions and we look forward to doing business with him and him closing the property and developing it. I'm just looking at it as the possibility that that doesn't happen. We wouldn't want to lose our original site plan that was zoned in 2006.
Well, I had two comments for you and a question. Comment number one is, thank you for investing in Smyrna and sticking it out through an interesting period of time in all of our lives. But, and number two, thank you for seeking out and working with quality builders like we've already had occasion to work with in the past. It makes a huge difference for us in Smyrna and our future. And the third one is, I noticed you, you own some adjacent land that may not be developable land, but it's not in the city. We'd love to invite you to join us as well with that additional property to clean up the map a little bit, if you could, so...
Well, thank you. So, it's nice to be back here. It's been a long time, so hopefully this...
How many acres is that?
Beg pardon?
How many acres is that that's adjoining? That you can't build on?
Yeah, it's probably, I don't know, eight or 10 acres, maybe, all down the creek bed and around the corner.
Nice place for skeet ridge or something.
Got a lot of, it's a lot of the Nickajack Creek bed.
A lot of Nickajack Creek bed.
That's right.
Good deal. Thanks, Mark.
Mr. Fennel, question. In terms of option B that Mr. Shaw has requested, I'm okay with that. But in your motion, can we somehow tie that to the Ashton Woods purchase and closure so that both options don't go forward in perpetuity? That if Ashton Woods acts, then it becomes option B? If they don't act, then we're not taking away option B, but option A is still on the table?
Mr. Shaw, you own the property. Tell us your reaction to that, please.
At some point in time, I'd like to get our city attorney involved with this, too.
I would like to keep both options because I'm not, standing here today, I'm not sure that if Ashton Woods does not proceed, that we would not want to develop this plan. So I think to have an 81-lot plan as well as a 60-lot plan is in, is in everyone's best interest. So I would like to keep the two options without one expiring.
And conceptually, I'm okay with that, but I agree with the mayor. Then I think we have a legal question. Can we zone a property two different ways at the same time?
Yeah, I'm just listening to this for the first time. Let me, let me ask you a couple of questions. Are you trying to, I understand the contractual issue. I'm assuming there's some stipulations that probably are beyond your control. And so you're trying to make sure that you, you don't have, that they don't get a contractual out by, through this zoning process? That's one issue, right? And the other issue is you're trying to make sure that if this sale doesn't go forward, that you can have the option of building the original plan? Are those the two issues?
That's right.
Okay, is that, go ahead.
Well, I'm just going to add that I think part of it is that it's, it is an interesting moment when you can downzone. That's a good, that's a good side of it. But it's really specific to our intentions with the property. So, yeah. Mark's saying in a nice way, if we don't close, he could be hung up with an Ashton Woods-specific zoning site plan. And I'm going to tell you that likelihood is close to zero. But because it's not zero, I can never say it, it's zero, then I understand his concern. And that's it. I think they'd have to come back through anyway, right? I mean, another, if there was to be a change...
If there was a change?
If there was a change, someone would have to come through this process again.
If they went from 60 homes to anything different? Or if it...
No, 81 homes.
Proceeded with the 81, if they proceeded with the 81 to start with, I don't know that they could go back to the 60. Is that right? Pursue one or the other?
Once they start, get a permit, then they're locked in.
If we, if we made the, the motion to rezone to this plan, to your, your plan, or, or rezone to your plan, subject to the sale, to Ashton Woods occurring within a certain day, would that address here? Yeah. Would that address it?
I think so.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, within...
And once we close, we're in, so there's no, yeah.
Yeah, and then if you close, it's, so it'd be the, the zoning, subject to, or the zoning, yeah, you know, subject to the property selling to Ashton Woods within 12 months of today? And, and then say in the motion, if the property doesn't sell within that time period, then the zoning reverts to the...
Previous plan.
Is now.
And our hope, by the way, is...
Will that work? To the current approval, yes.
And our hope is to close within, we hope, 45 days. And we're not going to be kicking the can too much more.
I have to give you guys credit. I didn't think y'all could outcomplicate this body.
I just want you guys to know what it is. Yeah, okay.
Okay, do we know what we're doing? It'll be the first time. Okay. Well, Mr. Fennel.
Mr. Mayor, having heard all this discussion, I move approval of Z13-010 with the following amendment. Amendment number one, to add the phraseology 50% maximum. Is that the term you want to use, Ken? Insert it where you will, please.
I've inserted it in two places in number one.
Okay.
"No elevation shall be comprised of 50% hardy plank siding, period." That was one sentence.
Okay.
Then the last sentence where it says, "The residents whose lots are but external roadway shall not be permitted to utilize more than 50%." Instead of rewriting everything, I'm just sort of inserting the 50% in two different places.
That's good. That's amendment number one. And amendment number two is, council, you want to read out your amendment number two on the 60-day, I mean, the 12-month stipulation?
Yeah, the, the entire zoning would be subject to the property transferring from the current owner to, is it Ash, to... Ashton Atlanta Residential LLC within 12 months of today. And if the property doesn't transfer, then the zoning reverts to what it is now.
Those two amendments, Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
I have made the motion?
Mr. Lenka seconded it. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, let's, let's see if we can vote now. Can it go through?
Not yet. Need a voting screen.
All right, we'll do this. I guess approve 6 to 0. Is that correct? Yeah, approve 6-0. Thank y'all very much.
Thank you for your investment.
Do y'all have something else on?
Good luck.
Okay. Item 5 is previous licenses. We have none. Item 6 is formal business. CVY 2013-02. Mayor and council approves the amendment in conveyance of right-of-way property as described in the attached legal description and is depicted on the boundary survey of North Cooper Lake Road dated March 3, 2013, and being shown as a 40-foot right-of-way of a parcel containing 1.39 acres, 60,494 square feet, as part of a zoning request for the property located on the southeast corner of Fontaine Road and the east-west connector. Mr. Taylor, the background, please.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, the agenda title pretty much says it all on this one. Essentially, what you have here is you have a, an old abandoned roadway that's going through this, almost through the center of the property. And it's not currently in use. And so Public Works and Community Development have been working with the developer to actually abandon this roadway and convey it over to them for, for use during the development of the project. So we do recommend approval.
Uh, this is, and Mr. Ron Fennel, Mr. Fennel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In, in recognizing the abandoned roadway that runs through the property mentioned, the owner owns both sides of the roadway. North Cooper Lake was bisected by the east-west connector some 18 years ago, I guess. And so that roadway has been abandoned. Therefore, the applicant is seeking that roadway to be included and will be a part of this major project. And I therefore move approval of conveyance, CVY 2013-02.
Before we get a second, may I ask the applicant a question? Mr. Shaw, when we abandon this roadway, which I'm happy to do, I think that's the right thing in this case, do you plan to remove the asphalt totally within the property boundaries to create more pervious surface, less runoff?
Yes, as you, and it shows on the plan. It, most of the, the road does run through existing lots or what will be existing lots. So that will be removed during development, once we have an...
I'm worried more about the east side of the property, kind of around the creek and across the creek to the boundary. Would you remove that asphalt as well?
Across the, across the bridge?
Yes.
Yes, that's all part of, that's within the development. That will all be removed and cleaned. We currently have, there has been some dumping that's been occurring over the years on that road. And I would just like to ask if it's possible, since we are, would be cleaning that debris and hauling that off, if there's any, any way to obtain any credits through permits to, to be able to, to clean that, that road since it's currently public right-of-way?
I don't know. I think we certainly would work with you as best we could. I don't know the answer to your question right now.
Okay. But yes, the intent is to remove the road, remove the debris, develop the property, install the streets, and then eventually, I believe, these, these streets are dedicated as public right-of-way.
That's great. I appreciate that. And I second Mr. Fennel's motion.
Yeah, but are you going to help him with the permits? That's what he... Can't, can't tell you no unless we ask you. Got a motion, a second, motion and a second to approve this. Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, let's vote and see if that works. Hey, I think it worked. It's just like the last vote. No, it's approved 6-0. Is that correct?
That's correct.
6-0. Thank you very much. We look forward to working with Ashton Woods.
Thank you.
Sorry we missed calls, so, sometime.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, have a good night.
All right. Item 7 is commercial building permits. We have none. Item 8 is consent agenda. And we, as we did at the beginning of the meeting, we added two items. So Mr. Taylor, if you'll make sure that you add those two items to the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, with those two items, we now have four items on the consent agenda this evening. First one is approval of June 3, 2013, mayor and council meeting minutes. Item B is an approval of the revised personnel policy, EMP 11-0. It's incentive proficiency pay and authorize the mayor to execute related documents. Item C is approval of resolution R2013-05, extending the emergency 911 surcharge and authorize the mayor to execute any related documents. And the final one is renewal of sun trust. It's approval of renewal of sun trust corporate resolution, R2013-06, and a certificate of incumbency and authorize, signature of any, any required documents.
Move approval of the consent agenda.
I have motion and second. Most by Mr. Lenka, second by Mr. Pritchett to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor of the motion, please vote. Approve 6-0. Thank you very much. Item 9 is committee reports. We'll start tonight, we'll start tonight with Ms. Melanie Pritchett. We're glad you're back, Melanie.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's good to be back. I just have a couple of quick things. The meeting for June 3 that we were not able to stream live, have live streaming on has now been uploaded and you can go back and watch that if you'd like. We had some technical difficulties, not on our part, but Granica's uploaded a software change and it knocked everything that we had in the computer out. So Terry and I were on a conference call with the CEO out in California. He assured us that he would set some plans in place so that the next time they had an upload, we would not have a crash on our system. Terry's also worked very closely with three or four of their support people and they've really put a lot of time into recovering this. And as we talked about a couple of months ago, anytime you have new technology, there's going to be some glitches. And I do appreciate everybody's patience with that. And we're going to do our best. Terry has put in a plan that on Monday, she will check the system out in the afternoon. If there is a... If there is a problem, then she'll call, she has a person to call for it, and we appreciate that. And the other thing that I want to say, too, is if you own a business in Smyrna, or you work for a business in Smyrna, you need to let our purchasing department know that you want to get bids, because so many times, and I'm not sure how this system actually works, but somebody will say, "Oh, well, I could have bid on that project, and I live in the city, but I didn't know anything about it." So I think we need to do a better job of letting people know that they need to report to us. I mean, there's no way we can go out and check every business in the city, and some people may not want to do that. But just a friendly reminder, if you do have a business in the city, then let the city know that you want to do business and you would like to bid on contracts. And with that, I will yield, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Terry Nulowich.
Thank you, yeah. Finance does not have a report tonight, and Community Relations has no formal report tonight, but I do want to remind everyone that Food Truck Tuesdays, it is going strong each Tuesday in Bronner Park. If you want the truck lineup and up-to-the-minute weather-related information of the nights like tonight, you can check the city's Facebook page, that's facebook.com-cityofsmyrnaGA. There's also a link to the Facebook page from smyrnacity.com. You do not need to be on Facebook to look at the city's Facebook page, it is a public page. The next summer concert is scheduled for Saturday, July 13 at 7:00 PM, and without a yield.
Ms. Corky Welsh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I see Scott Stokes and Public Works out there for, come for a report.
Last week's storms, if we remember, crews reported about eight trees down within the city. Most of the damage we sustained was over in the Forest Hills area. We did have spotty damage throughout the city, but Forest Hills got, hit the worst with the storms. I cruised out about 9 o'clock that night, and I worked, worked into the morning hours to clear tree debris out of the roadways, and so folks could get back and forth. Our Belmont Hills Connector Sploß Project's virtually complete. We, they're still working on a few punch list items. The road unfortunately is having to remain closed, and it's the road that actually goes up to the new elementary school. Since the contractor on the other end for Halpern is not quite finished, he's got barricades across the road, and we don't want to open it up and somebody run into a concrete barricade in the middle of the road. We think within the next two weeks he'll have his portion paved. Once it's approved by the city, then we may go ahead and open up that Belmont Connector Road. Our Concord Road widening project is back to somewhat of a snail's crawl unfortunately due to, still got utilities on the old poles. AT&amp;T is working diligently to get their utility off the poles. Next contractor's charter communications, it needs to get off there, get off the poles, then the poles can be removed and the contractor, see that math can start grading on the north side. Ward Street Improvement Sploß Project, that's the widening, well, not the widening, the median, reduction of lanes on Ward Street to coincide with the Belmont Connector Sploß Project. That should, that's supposed to bid next week, and shortly after that, we'll do a bid award, and we'll see when we can get that contractor started. I've got a water main replacement over on Whitfield Street that's almost complete. Got some landscaping on the last project that was on Cherokee Trail, that's landscaping is about 50% complete, but with all this rain, we're having issues with landscaping, sod and all that. Sod farms aren't cutting the sod because of the rain. And on Lynnwood Drive, we've got a storm sewer project that's about 70% complete, and the last project for the, this fiscal year will be over on Concord and North Cooper Lake for a small storm drainage project over there. That's all I have.
Thank you, Scott. Ann Kirk and Virginia Davis are both out this evening, but Ann had left me a few things that she wanted to bring up. First of all, the, the market, fresh market, we have from 8:00 AM to 12:00 noon each Saturday in the First Baptist Church parking lot. We still have some space for some, some vendors. If you are a farmer out there and you have some vegetables to sell, we'd love to have you. But also, if you're just a citizen or someone out in the county, please come and join them. There's fresh vegetables, fruit, peaches, spices, bread, soaps, and even dog biscuits, Ann says, for sale, so please come out. Secondly, adopt a mile, the next roadside pickup is July the 20th, and you can call Virginia Davis at 678-631-5519 to register for that event. You do need to register and come in and sign a waiver, but call Virginia at 678-631-5519 to do that. And finally, community garden, Ann says there are still plots available, and there's still some time to plant some late summer vegetables, and you can contact Ann or Virginia at that same number so that you can get a plot and have a community garden. With that, Mr. Mayor, I yield.
Ms. Susan Workerson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to call Mary Moore from the library to give us a report.
Hey, good evening. The library is now in its third full week of summer programming, and we have already surpassed last year's numbers for signups. We have a combined 839 children, teens, and adults signed up for summer reading, which is an increase of 223 people, and this is just June. We're going to be signing people up for another six weeks. So we're pretty excited about this numbers and really pleased with the turnout so far. Besides our regular storytimes, we have a lot of special events. For example, this past Saturday, we had Dr. Dino puppet show, and that had about 150 people attend that event. And this Saturday, we have a bug squad party where you dress up like your favorite bug. Tomorrow, the teens are watching the movie Perfect Pitch, and the event, another event tomorrow that I'm especially excited about is New York Times bestselling author, Jocelyn Jackson, will be at the library speaking at 10:30. Her topic is groundbreaking on a new novel, where and how do books begin? One other thing that I wanted to mention was that there's still time to compete in the Recycled Art Contest. This is a project that keeps Smyrna beautiful and the library collaborate on every year, where you take recycled materials from your home and create art. So there is still time to pick up an entry form at the library. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mary. And with that, I yield.
Mr. Wade Lenica.
Thank you, Your Honor. We have no report tonight from HR or Court Services. I do want to say, I think the concert that we had here recently on the Village Green was a great concert, had a lot of very positive public comment and feedback on that, and I thank all the staff who were involved in that. Finally, just one other brief announcement, if you're a veteran and would be interested in working with the Smyrna Veterans Committee to help us plan our ceremonies, Veterans Day and Memorial Day, please contact me, 770-319-5311. Again, 770-319-5311. Any veterans that would like to help us plan our ceremonies, we'd love to have you come and talk about joining our team. With that, I yield.
Mr. Ron Fennel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll call on Chief Jason Lanian first to give a summer update, a reminder, some of the things that your fire department does on a regular basis to help citizens of Smyrna.
Well, Jason, come up. Mr. Shaw, did you by any chance have a report? Okay, just stay back there then.
Tonight, I wanted to talk about a program that we've had for a long time, but I haven't brought it out lately, and that is the Car Seat Inspection Program, Child Passenger Safety Seat Program. We still do that actively, we do it every Monday, the appointments are between 9:00 and 3:00. You do need to have an appointment, because that actually rotates around to the different fire stations, week to week, so that you'll need to know, you'll need to have an appointment so you know which station to go to. It's actually been quite busy the last couple of weeks, but, you know, before that, it had dropped down to only four a day, so we had a lot of openings and a lot of availability with that. It usually takes anywhere between 30 minutes and an hour, and we won't actually put your car seat in for you, but we will show you how to do it properly. With that, I have a few stats and a little bit about the law about car seats.
What you say, that y'all won't, y'all won't put it in, but you'll show them how to do it?
That's exactly right.
We, we don't put it in, we teach you how to put it in, so if you have to take it out again, you can put it back right.
Yeah, chances are, once it's in your car, it's going to come out, and it doesn't do you any good to not know how to put it back in.
Right. And here's what's amazing-
I'll tell you this, I took, y'all helped me put one in my truck, and I felt like never got that thing out.
Yeah, it's actually kind of surprising that-
I mean, they're tough, if you, if you put them in right.
That's correct. To put it in correctly, you basically have to take a full-grown person, get in the seat and lock it down, because it's not supposed to move.
That's what I refuse to do. They tried, your guys tried to get me to get in the seat.
Yeah, if you've got to jam your knee in there, and be real careful to move the buckles out of the way before you jam your knee and put your full body weight on it.
So it is a little complicated.
You were not supposed to sit in the seat.
That's what they kept saying, get in the seat, and we're struggling.
They had the picture ready, they were trying to get a picture, but-
I had my, my son harnessed while he was in the first grade, so you're-
You're from, so, well, I have a seven-year-old, so we're in the stages of this. It is, it's confusing at best how it should be put in, and I guess that explains this next statistic from the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration, eight out of 10 car seats are installed incorrectly.
And I'm telling you what I know about kids, grandkids and little kids, they are so aware of the seatbelt and needing to be in that seatbelt in that seat, and they'll, I've been told before, don't, don't move until I get this thing buckled in. I mean, they know, and they know they're not supposed to go anywhere until they're buckled in, and I think that's great, it's just, you know, they used to throw me in the back of the seat, where the little areas, where the glass was, the back glasses. We said, I mean, there was no seatbelts when we were growing up, but I think it's great that kids are aware now that they're not going anywhere until they're in that seatbelt and it's, and they're strapped in good.
I can remember sleeping in the back glass deck-
That's what I'm talking about.
-all the way to Florida, yeah. I mean, so, but let's talk about, just for a second, who, who's required to be in a seat, because I think this is where a lot of people are confused. And the Georgia law is pretty clear, that if the child's under eight years old or under 57 inches, they have to be in the backseat. Seven-year-old child, it's illegal to be in the front seat unless it's a pickup truck and there is no backseat. Then, if they're under eight and it is a pickup, they still have to be in a car seat in the front. Where you have to be very, very careful about the front seat in a pickup truck is the airbag. An airbag can kill a child, they're not designed to be able to impact a child the same way. If they're under eight years old, the child has to be in, according to Georgia law, in a car seat or a booster seat that is age and built for their appropriate height. And so you have to look at the seat you're buying based on the size of your child. But a lot of people think that six and seven-year-old children don't have to be in a car seat, and that's just not the case. I have a seven-year-old, believe me, he wants out of the car seat, but that's the way it is, you're in the booster until you're eight or you're 57 inches tall. I just, beyond that, I think it's important just to point out a few safety things. All the safety recommendations are that regardless of the law, if the child's under 13 years old, they probably need to be in the backseat, that's the safest place for them. The other thing is, if you are going to buy a car seat, if that car seat is ever, if your car is ever involved in an accident, even a minor accident, and that car seat is in that car, that car seat needs to be replaced. And the last thing is, a lot of people still to this day avoid, or I shouldn't say avoid, they neglect to buckle up correctly for the short trips, and that's the ones that end up getting you. The average person that's injured in a car wreck is within five miles of their house, and so we see a lot of children that are injured on that little quarter-mile jaunt to the corner store. So the important thing is, before the car moves, as you were saying with the child, the seatbelts need to be on, so. That's all I got on car seats. I was going to just bring up one thing, I was hoping Chief Lee was going to go first tonight, because I'm setting myself up for this, but you know, he was out last week, but I did send him an email, and I, I would hope that some of you would have mentioned to him that last week there actually was National Donut Day, so.
National Donut.
On that note, Chief Lee's lobbed one for you, let's see if you can smash it.
God love the Hostrakers, they can make good biscuits.
I will say this, Chief Lanian and I were at a grand opening last night, no, Saturday night, at Going Gear over on Concord Road by King Street, and he ate a lot more food than I did. Of course, it was free, that's why he ate more than I did. Kind of give you an update of some of the programs we got going, our citizens' police academy's in the fourth week. The feedback we've been getting on this has been great, everybody really loves it. And interestingly enough, the officers who've been given the classes have been having a great time. A lot of it deals with the type of questions and the feedback they've been getting off the citizens in the police academy, it just kind of helps, keeps them motivated as well.
How many people, chief, do you have in that academy this year?
Well, we have 15, because this is the first one. We wanted to keep it controllable. The future ones will probably have close to 25 in there, but we, being it was the first one they were doing, they wanted to keep it to a smaller amount, just to make sure that if they had any issues, that they could address them pretty quickly. We had our first gun safety seminar. We had 95 people register, but we only had 63 in attendance, but even still, for a first event, you know, that's a pretty good number. It's kind of like you think about whenever you go to have a party at your house, you know, you used to expect about 50% of the people come back. But the, what we got back from a lot of the residents who attended, they, they really enjoyed it. The, our firearms instructors, man, they had a great personality, of course, they live for this kind of thing anyhow. And so they, they brought out a lot of different weapons that had been made safe to show everybody some of the different things that were out there. We originally, we were going to have a trail safety course this month, but we kind of held off on it because we've already had a couple other programs going on so soon, and we actually decided that since we do have a portion of the Silver Comet Trail that we're going to do, add a bike safety in with the trail safety course, so what we're looking at doing is probably in September of putting that course together and offering that out.
Lenica, you said that we have a section of Silver Comet Trail?
That's correct.
What is that? For our jurisdiction?
Yes, yes, we do have a portion of Silver Comet Trail.
Yeah, I know it runs through six or seven, but I didn't, it's the first that I've heard that we had jurisdictions in there.
Yes.
It's in the city limits, even though it's-
Silver Comet Trail belongs to who?
It's a county-maintained trail, but it's, it's jurisdictionally, you're within the city limits.
Correct.
Now, I know it's in the city limits, but I'm just saying who has jurisdiction. I like to, not that I question, I want to see that in writing, because I understand that the issue's come up about who has jurisdiction, and it's my understanding that the county has total jurisdiction on the Silver Comet Trail.
Total jurisdiction on-
That's, I'm asking a question, it's not a statement.
Okay.
It's a question.
I, I don't know, I'll research that. I don't, I, I don't know that they would have total, but I'll, I'll check into that for you.
Okay, no big deal. I just, I just wanted to know.
Okay. As you know, we had our first promotion ceremony, we were able to promote six people up recently, and we had a promotion ceremony at Bronner Hall that was really successful. You know, we allowed family members or significant others to pin the badge on their, you know, newly promoted people. We had four people promoted sergeant and two promoted lieutenant, and it, it went off real well. We, the family members, I had family members coming up and thanking me for the program. And then we have one new hire, of course, we snagged from Cobb County Police Department, and of course, they're moving up, but, yes.
Coming in.
Well, good deal. Any questions?
Chief, your team has been working very hard, the weekends, the DUI patrol, we appreciate that, speed mitigation, we appreciate that, too. I, you know, it's my understanding that Marietta may be looking for another place to put their prisoners, because you'll have housed all of our spaces with-
Well, they, they have had to get into a contract with Kennesaw for overflow.
There you go.
So, in case our jail's filled up.
Well, with, with the citizens of Smyrna's appreciation, we thank all of you in public safety for what you do every day to protect and defend us and keep up the great work.
Thank you very much, and I tell you, we got a great group of officers at the police department that really make my job easy.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, also want to acknowledge the young man who's working with the scouts, he has recruited three additional scouts to help us with our sidewalk inventory project this summer. I'll keep you updated on that as we go, we have an Instagram site that is allowing upload of, of these opportunities, and then when we can find the money to pave sidewalks, we'll continue to do that to increase our walkability in the city. Want to acknowledge the Vice Chair of our Development Authority here with us tonight, Doug Stoner, thank you for your service and continued service to Smyrna. With that, Mr. Mayor, I yield.
Mr. Taylor, anything? Mr. Cochran? Ms. Terry Graham, our city clerk. Let's see, we have no show cause hearing, we've got four people that have signed up for Citizens Input, Greg Martin, 25. for Citizens Input, Greg Martin, 2568 Highland Avenue, Smyrna Police Department.
Thank you, sir. Mayor Bacon and council members, on Friday night, November 30th, our house in Williams Park was burglarized. The Smyrna Police Department acted quickly, investigated the evidence, and concluded the case. Several people were arrested, and our case has been successfully adjudicated. While my family is grateful for the investigation, we thought our case would not be truly finished without us publicly thanking the men and women of the Smyrna Police Department. We thank them for the investigation and the professionalism. On a more personal level, we deeply appreciate the concern they showed to us as their neighbors. I would like to thank this council for its leadership in supporting the police department and the rest of our city's activities. Thank you.
Elliot Bakri, 3459 Shawnee Trail, comments.
My first comment tonight is on the new announcement, July 1st, of this six and a half percent increase in the water bill. That's 8% last August, 6% February 1st, and now another six and a half. That's 20 and a half percent in a year of an increase from the Water Department. I find that outrageous. I want to remind this council that last year, $1.58 million was transferred from the Water Department back to the general fund. I'd like to know why some of this money wasn't used to absorb these increases. People on fixed incomes or pools are going to get clobbered this summer. When you've got a base bill of $15 and $20 for once a week pickup, times 12,000 residential homes, there's no way I can see with my math that this, the Water Department is losing. I cannot see this justification of another six and a half percent. Ironically, Mayor, that you're on the Cobb County Water Commission, that I just find this just outrageous, and people are very upset. This is going to be a big issue in the next election. By the way, the next election's four months, in four months, the halfway term is already going to be upon us. This is going to be interesting. Second, Mayor, your new position as a campaign manager, I'd like to know how you're going to find time to be mayor of the city. That is a U.S. Senate seat. That's very interesting. That's going to take a lot of time and effort. We can't even get you to do a town hall meeting. So I don't know how you're going to balance time putting into that campaign and then also being a mayor. More than ever, we need new businesses in this city. Businesses are closing. Another one on Lake Drive across from Needa Fence has just closed. We need people that are going to really get some new businesses in here. You can see from the businesses that are empty in the city around Kroger's, around Market Village, in front of City Hall.
Yeah, it's terrible.
And I just don't see how you're going to be able to put the time in for that and also be mayor of the city. I know for sure, I know how I'm going to vote, make sure I vote no next year on who I'm voting, not going to vote for. Thank you very much.
Larissa Edwards, 304 Hickory, Real Change.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Larissa Edwards. I am the Messiah. I am here to prove it. Now, normally when I come, I'm smiling and everything's as heart and bubbles, but tonight is not a heart and bubbles night. Not that the bottom is going to fall out or anything, not that I know of. It's just not a heart and bubbles night, okay? I have been instructed to inform you and everyone within the sound of my voice that it is time for worldwide peacemaker leadership. Now, I'm going to share something with you that you may or may not know. President Barack Obama is a good man. Matter of fact, he is the best man for the job. How do I know? Because God told me. Now, how is it that a good man who promised real change to America has not been able to bring real change? Does anybody know? Wouldn't anybody like to take a shot at it? I'm going to tell you. Barack Obama has not been able to provide real change in America as promised, simply because he has no real power, okay? He doesn't. What? You are talking about the President of the United States, girl. Arguably, the most powerful man in the world. He controls the mightiest military. Yes, he does. Yes, he does. But I am here to tell you, there is no real power in death. Real power is in life. And I'm going to say that one more time. There is no real power in death. Real power comes with life. Now, how is it that Barack Obama has not been able to bring real change to America? Simply because he can't do anything about the increasing negative numbers. Nobody can. Not him, not the person after him, and not the person after him, not without real power. So I'm here to tell you that we can't prosper as a country with increasing negative numbers. It's not possible. The math doesn't add up. I'm going to say that one more time, too. We cannot prosper as a country in the red, okay? Now, I know I was supposed to come tonight and speak about God's math formula. Here it is on my shirt. I'll speak about it next time we speak, okay? My job tonight was to inform everyone that it is time for worldwide peacemaker leadership. Are there any questions? No? Well, if not, have a good evening. My name is Larissa Edwards, peacemaker for president.
Mayor Kirkland, 1078 Oakview, uninformed.
Well, I guess if she's the Messiah, I must be the Antichrist in Smyrna. Mayor Bacon, last time I sat down after my comments, you stated that I was totally uninformed. So I would really like for you to explain. If I got all my information from the committee of the whole meeting minutes and from sitting in the previous budget meeting, and all, that's the only information that I spoke about. I don't know where the uninformation came from, and your idea, unless you just didn't like that the information about the private employees-only fitness center was being talked about in this meeting that you guys spent lots of time in your private work session meetings discussing. Hopefully, that thing is gone for good, but I don't know. Now, the, here's some more, I guess, uninformed information I'm going to take from the Downtown Development Authority meeting minutes. I think it's time that people are informed about what is going on with all the empty lots. There is information that could be put out to the people, including what's happening at Hickory Lakes. I spoke that I had read that the big box store, Walmart, I'm supposing it's Walmart, had offered $10 million, and Brandon Goddard has said that you better accept that because you're not going to get any other offer. If you wait a few more years, the price is going to go down to $5 million. Now, if you're working with something with Adventure Outdoors and Jay Wallace and trying to get in a gun manufacturer or some sort of manufacturing company like that connected with him, and I don't know if Bob Barr is going to help with that whole deal, but whatever's going on there, we need to know. And what I really kind of am confused about, you continue to say, and it's even here you're quoted in the minutes, saying that you said commercial projects are just not moving yet in Atlanta. But I'm here to let you know, because maybe you need to be informed. I just tore out some things, printed out some things. The Inman Park Project is a $46 million mixed use development set to break ground this summer down in Inman Park. The Croggs Street Market is Tyler Perry's old studios down in Inman Park. They're turning that into a $70 million, 66,000 square foot restaurant and shops market. The Ponce City Market is a 2.1 million square foot live work at the old police station down there, the Sears Building on Ponce. That's moving forward. The West Side Provisions District is adding 14,000 square feet of retail space. There's also a big Walton Community Apartments being built down at Huff and Howell Mill. Sandy Springs is, there's a huge project, a mixed use project going in Sandy Springs called 100 North Park. It's going to be a 1.3 million square feet of office space and other things there. Decatur is breaking ground on a $40 million mixed use downtown, in addition to all their other, and that's apartments and retail. The Frazier Street Apartments in Roswell are being, are being demolished and rebuilt into stacked flats.
Okay, thank you for your comments.
Many, many projects are going on all over town, and why isn't Smyrna trying to compete with these things?
Thank you so much. Thank you for your comments. All right, any other business to be brought for this body?
I do want to just say in closing, I want to thank Dogma, which is a small business in Smyrna located off Southside Drive, thanking Mr., maybe Mr. Lenka or Mr. Finell for it. Operated by Robin Crawford, and I got in a tight a couple of weeks ago and had to have a place for my dog. And I tell you that, they do an outstanding job. They board them, they groom them, they train them. And Robin's sort of stuck down in a hole down in there, but if you drive down Southside Drive, you'll see a Jack Russell jumping up and chasing a bottle or something. But one of our many small businesses that do a great job. So I want to wish my granddaughter, again, happy birthday. And I know this is the 17th of birthday for a lot of folks out there, so if it's your birthday, happy birthday. So I'd like to plan this meeting adjourned at, looks like 8:51.